All right, I would like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like hearing our students say that, too. That makes my heart happy, so...I know, I like to, more than just my voice up here, so...Director Flynn, would you please read our mission statement?
Thank you. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, then, is information from individuals and delegations, and so I would ask if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board. You may do so by coming forward and just state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes, and when you have about 30 seconds left, our board secretary, Pam Arndorfer, will hold up a yellow card and ask that you conclude your minutes. When you get to three minutes, she'll hold up a red card. And I would also ask that you please avoid discussion or criticizing of the job performance for employees of the district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled in a different channel, not in this public forum. And we provide this as an opportunity for people to come address us, but generally, this is not a back-and-forth unless it's to clarify an issue, because we don't address things that are not on our agenda for the evening. So with that, I would open the microphone and ask if there's anyone that would like to come address the board. Please step forward and state your name and address. So I did all that, and I know, I was like, "We have people in the room," so I don't know always when people are here, if they want to come forward, so...all right, seeing no one, then I will move on to item A, which is our partnership with John Deere Waterloo. And I don't know if Dr. Lindeman, if you want to set this up at all, or if I'm just going to invite Mindy Schmidt, who's the Community Relations Manager with John Deere here in town, forward, and we're going to hear a presentation about our valued partnership. We're so excited, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having us.
And we decided they were going to go ahead and go first, and so Lynette and Mindy are going to talk, and then I'm going to bring up the rear. So there, you guys go.
Perfect.
So we're into it over.
Awesome.
All right.
Get her back, get her back.
And will you make sure that the microphone is on, Schmidt?
Test?
Yep, you're good.
Oh, there it is.
You're set, all right.
And I feel really weird having my back to you, so I apologize. It's not in my nature. So thank you, guys, so much for the opportunity to come speak to you today. As Shan Lee stated, I'm Mindy Schmidt, the Community Relations Manager for John Deere Waterloo, and...
I'm Lynette Teline, and you might ask, "Why me? Why am I here?" So I'm, my current position, I am responsible for program management for engines globally, but I am the Waterloo Schools liaison for the Waterloo-John Deere Citizenship Committee. So what's a citizenship committee? What's our purpose? If you think about maybe having every single principal in the school district doing their own thing, as it relates to whatever, pick a topic, that's kind of what citizenship was for Waterloo at John Deere. So every factory kind of did their thing, they had their relationship, maybe they were doing the same things, maybe they were stepping on each other's toes. So we kind of said, "Hey, why don't we get the citizenship committee of the leaders of some of the factories and some of the organizations in Waterloo, form a committee, and then ask each person, 'Hey, can you be the liaison for Habitat for Humanity? Hey, who would like to be the liaison for Northeast Iowa Food Bank?'" And you're looking at me, Waterloo Schools, so glad to be here.
Glad to be here.
Absolutely.
So what we want to do today is, we've been on a journey. I'm going to let Lynette kick it off, and then we'll get into more specifics about Waterloo, but John Deere, working with John Deere, has shifted over especially the last 24 months, 24 to 18 months. And so what we'd like to do is kind of give you a little bit of that backstory on the why, and then we'll jump into the more specifics of what's going on specific to Waterloo.
Yeah, so just like Waterloo Schools, right, strategic plan, we have refocused a significant, in the last, as many said, 18 months, a new strategic plan for us, and always about five to 10 years. And as part of that, citizenship was a major, major change in our focus and our commitment. And in March of this year, we came out with what we call the Three Bold Commitments and said, "Hey, there are three things that, from a citizenship standpoint, we are going to double down on. This is where we're going to focus our energy and focus our commitment," and one of those ties directly to why we're here today. So Deere has committed $100 million over the next decade to our home communities. And what that means is, where we have factories located, we are going to invest $100 million over the next 10 years in those things, in the communities where family and youth live, work, learn, and making sure that we have equitable opportunities, inclusive opportunities, for self-sustaining and human dignity, ability to be, have the resources needed to thrive in those home communities. And so examples would be annually, we're going to put $2 million into the food banks in those home communities. And that should be the equivalent of about 100 million meals over the next decade, and we are going to make investments. The goal is investments in education that will touch and impact 100 million kids over the next 10 years.
One additional area in that focus area is not only the feeding of the stu-, feeding of the youth and the families in our home community, but also investments to reach youth education that will focus on serving at least 1 million underserved and underrepresented students within that 10-year time as well. So as we look to what the John Deere strategy is around citizenship, let's focus it in on what that means for Waterloo. So what I have in front of you is really our mission statement. The really cool thing, in our opinion, on with the John Deere Foundation shifting their focus has allowed us flexibility in our home communities, which is fantastic. It was too structured in the past that you kind of had to figure out how we weaved through these things, and they've recognized the needs are different in Des Moines versus Waterloo versus Dubuque, which is a fantastic time. So we leaped on the opportunity, literally, to say, "We need to reinvest and refresh in some of our relationships." So as you can see with our mission statement, we are committed, as John Deere Waterloo is how we'll call this collective of all the facilities in the community, to really work on, through community engagement, economic development, and workforce development, but really focusing on the opportunity to remove those barriers for growth and development while inspiring our employees our greatest asset. Now, with that said, that's a lot of different things, but I'll break that down a little bit more for you. So when we look at workforce development, it's really about the opportunity for employability. At the end of the day, we don't really care where we want the youth and the adults to be upskilled, but that youth, that future generations for us, to understand what's possible, what those paths are, and if they work at John Deere, great, but if they work somewhere else, it's even better to lift up, to make the greater good of our community. So just one of these pillars we're focusing in on specifically to workforce development is education and youth. So that's what we're going to focus on today as far as the update on this wonderful relationship that we have. So with that, we have a three-pronged approach when it comes to workforce development. The first one is a strategic one. That's some of these meetings that we're having with Dr. Lindeman and her staff, really looking at your strategic plan to see how John Deere can fit into that puzzle to best support your business in lifting up the school district. Additionally, we're looking at programs that we offer through apprenticeships, the Ignite Program, some of those items that you may have seen with the Waterloo Career Center, but also recruiting and hiring, and how we're doing that, and giving exposure to kids to understand what's possible, you know, even if it's resume building or interview skills, those types of opportunities. And then the third piece, the newest, freshest piece, is our community outreach opportunities, getting into the schools with hands-on activities, getting the kids excited on what manufacturing can look like, whether it's at John Deere or other locations, but it's much broader than that. So that workforce development piece is really critical to our number-one partner. When we looked at things was Waterloo Schools has the biggest footprint of the best possible talent that we haven't even tapped into, and so we have some great opportunities to work through some of the strategic plans, hence why we reached out to Dr. Lindeman. There'd been work done in the past, but we said, "You guys share with us your strategic plan, and then we're going to show you what citizenship now means to John Deere." And what the really neat part was is, we took, let them, we shared, and then we came back together and said, "You tell us how we fit in your plan." And we've never really taken that approach before. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lynette to kind of give a highlight of what we're doing now today.
So this is a little bit about put your money where your mouth is, right? So this was saying, "Hey, tell us where you would like us to focus." And I think, you know, I'll go through this list, and we'll talk through each of these a little, just briefly, but I think that's the thing that feels the most different to me, and I know I'm just saying it, and I hope, but hopefully, I think maybe Dr. Lindeman has felt it, too, that that is the biggest change, is that instead of Deere coming and telling you, "Hey, we're going to do this. Hey, this is what we think you should do," or, "Hey, we're offering this program. Why don't you partake?" We're trying to take a step back and say, "Just like we would go to our customers, why don't you tell us what your needs, what are your requirements, and we'll see how we can conserve you." So starting at the top, the Waterloo Career Center, we've agreed and we are supporting the sponsorship of $30,000 over the next three years. That's a continuation of a previous sponsorship. And then we also said, a conversation about, we have a lot of people in our business who are industry experts. Some of them are employed by us, others are tied into the industry, but say robotics, right, would be an area where we would have some unique individuals in our business or access to them to really help provide those industry best practices back into the Waterloo Career Center. Where are you needed? Where can we plug in? Where can we offer our support? Certainly STEM near and dear to our heart, but I think how STEM has felt to us in the past is, you know, it was available for those privileged kids that could stay after school or kids of our employees that had their own teams. But this was being very intentional, making sure we could touch every child in the classroom with that fantastic FIRST program, FIRST Robotics Program, provide middle and elementary school mentors, and then some professional development for teachers. Certainly, one other that we're really super excited about was the ST Math, the computer-based curriculum. I think you said in the first two and a half months, about 4,000 students were impacted with that, a virtual visual learning tool. And so we've agreed to a grant of about $330,000 over the next three years to support that continued piece into the curriculum. And the next two, this is where you start, really starting to see maybe some more of that, "Hey, how can we partner together?" And certainly, it's become more and more clear to us that, you know, the Waterloo Schools is a business, just like John Deere is a business. And things like leadership development and talent acquisition, I don't think two or three years ago, we would even had a conversation about, "Is there anything we can do there to support you? We see this in your strategic plan. Hey, we do some stuff in this space. Do we have anything that we could offer you? Do we have support? Do we have tools? Do we have access to something? Can we share best practices? How can we support you? This is something you say you're working on? How could we help partner and give you some collaborative input?" And then the higher expectations for students of color, I think we're still working on developing that a little bit with Kingsley, but again, trying to say, instead of us telling you, "Hey, here's what we're here to do for you," hey, "How can we support you with what you need?" So I think, you know, I think as a company, when we think of Deere, what do we want for our customers, and what do our customers want for us? And what they really want is they want a full field, a vibrant field. We'll pick on corn, because we're in Iowa, right? With every single kernel that is going to yield its ultimate potential. We want every single kernel. And we've learned, as we've listened to our customers, that we have to be very careful in how we support with the tools and the resources and the knowledge to enable that customer to yield every single kernel in turn. And I think as employees and as community, what do we want? We want a vibrant community. Our employees want a vibrant community that live, work, and learn in. And so how do we do that? We invest in that kernel. We invest in that student. How do we give those teachers the tools, the resources, the support, the knowledge that they need to turn every one of those kernels into someone who is yielding their ultimate potential? So it absolutely aligns, and we're just, we've been so excited because it just feels like it's a very different approach from John Deere, how we are approaching this piece of citizenship. And we can't thank Jane enough. She has been, Dr. Lindeman has been a tremendous helping, listening, bouncing, suggesting, and I think maybe some aha insights on both as we've gone forward. So looking very, very much forward to what happens over this next decade.
So I think what we'd like to do is, you know, the list is long and mighty. We tried to do brief to allow more of a dialogue with the board. We just appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you today. You know, Jessie, we did a volunteer event that supported back-to-school supplies with the assistance of Jen Hartman. I mean, there's many examples we could give you. Definitely, you can always reach out to myself, Mindy Schmidt, or Lynette. We'd be happy to share with you in more person, but really wanted to open the floor for Dr. Lindeman now and any questions you may have of us. Thank you.
Thank you. This whole partnership, it feels different this time. John Deere has been a longstanding partner for Waterloo Schools, and they've supported us forever. I've been in Waterloo for 17 years, working here, and it's been, they have been such a player in our work. That being said, this feels different. And so when Lynette and Mindy, I guess maybe Mindy reached out to me first and said, "Hey, you know, we really want to talk about alignment of partnership," and that was interesting. And so we came together, and she, and I remembered them saying, "Go beyond, go beyond money. You know, we can support with money, but go beyond that, because there might be other things that we can support. We could, we might have some ideas to share. You might have some ideas to share. How could we make this mutually beneficial?" And so then, you know, we just launched in this amazing campaign of work. It was just, it was great. And so the alignment is there, that you got to see some of the great ways that they are, they are supporting us, but it really feels like they are walking along with this. We meet on a, on a regular basis, all the way through, and so we, you know, we have a meeting, and Mindy's kind of a taskmaster, which is so helpful. No, really, she, it is amazing. Like, she takes that, she takes that off of our plates, and so she, you know, she schedules these meetings. We come together, we talk about where we are. If she needs a little, you know, secondary meeting, or if one of us does, then we schedule that on the side. And so it just, it feels really good. And so we can feel the new citizenship mission and community mission that's part of your strategic plan. And they've been able to, you know, they've been really supportive of our work and pushing us in, you know, gently, and sometimes, you know, pushing us in really great ways. So we've, we've just loved it. So I'm grateful. I'm really grateful for the work, and I think we're just getting started. I mean, this is, this is just a toe-dip into what's coming. So I feel like we've already accomplished a lot, but I think we're just getting going. So I was, we talked about how we were going to do this. I'm so grateful that they are here, because sometimes when people think of John Deere, because it's such a big organization, people forget that there's faces behind John Deere, right? And so Mindy and Lynette have just walked this with us, and so I just, I'm grateful for the partnership and for the opportunity to work with you as well.
And I would say ditto, is what I would say, but honestly, it's a new, it's a new dawn for us. It's collective collaboration is what we're looking for in the community as a whole. So this is just one of many partnerships that we're excited to be dipping our toes in, but I mean, we're in, the claws are in now, and we're very excited to see where we can continue to really grow together. And so we appreciate your guys' continued support, but would entertain any questions you may have of us.
I was just wondering, so is this going to be pulling from both salary and wage people, so the kids are seeing, like, different facets?
Okay. Yeah, actually, great question. Thank you for that. We're actually, when we look at it, it's our employees regardless. The really cool thing is in that community outreach portion that I was speaking about just a little bit, it's actually going to pull from one of our production employees. We've got salaried employees helping with mentoring, but we also have our production employees engage the volunteerism event that we held on site, was all production employees almost. So what we're trying to do is for us, too, this is, you know, mutual purpose. We want to help the kids, but at the end of the day, it helps us to get our employees an opportunity. Our production workers can't get off the line, or anyone that supports the production line can't leave to go volunteer. So we're bringing stuff to them, and so we're just trying to be creative in our own ways, and that's why Jen and I said, "Here's what we're trying to do. How can we make this happen?" And it was just this great collaboration, and there's more already coming in that space. I'll give you a little warning. There's more coming that we're pretty excited about in that space.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, very much. Thank you.
I think it's great. There's, I think, always been a lack of knowledge of what really happens within the factory and all the different jobs and all the different skills that are required, and the collaboration globally, really. I do have, if I could dive just a little bit deeper into your ST Math program, that's, that's a, is that a global program?
So it's through Mind Research, and my understanding is, I thought they were global, but I'm a little hesitant. I know they're, they're US-based, for sure, but it's Mind Research is the company that John Deere has partnered with through our corporate office and the John Deere Foundation. So we're able to help navigate that relationship to help extend opportunities like Waterloo Schools to that organization.
So this is an interactive virtual program?
I'll let her.
Yeah, absolutely. And you should be able to Google it and actually probably play a couple of games yourself. So it's kind of solving math problems, say, in a kind of a puzzle format. So it's a very virtual, visual way to learn math, as opposed to you have to read the words and you have to get, you have to have everything digested. So it's been very highly researched. Of course, you know how that works at Deere, right, Lyle? Highly researched as a game changer in the math space, and we actually have some, some people in our business that have children who've had some learning difficulties and have very much been, been huge proponents of the program. And I think from a math curriculum standpoint, I think the excitement, it's just, it makes math fun, is part of it.
Math is always fun. Is, is there an evaluation component to it? I guess what I'm getting at is there, is there potentially an opportunity to benchmark against other communities?
So what I would say, I'm going to answer it a little different way, Lyle, for you, is that what it does is, when they first opened it up in Waterloo Schools, it was two and a half months of just kind of playing to see where the students would go. So there was about 4,000 students that engaged in it. In the two and a half months, they played 800,000 puzzles were completed during that time, just out of sheer interest, because it was fun. Now what they're doing is actually building it into the curriculum of the classrooms. So my understanding is it's part of a measure through that vehicle. I don't know the full depths of it, but we can get some more information and let you know, Lyle.
What grades are those?
So my understanding was K, elementary focus.
K-5?
K-5, yep.
So Jane, does it all fit in then with the math curriculum that we've put in?
I'll let Stephanie answer that, and yes.
Well, Jane did answer. Yes, it does. Yep. This was brought to the board last spring. I couldn't tell you, I couldn't even tell you what month. Was it January? Geez.
It was actually, it, within two weeks, we don't move this fast, but it happened with timing of our board. Literally, I think from when we talked about it to check written was maybe four weeks, and it was, because you guys had to do your research and things. Sorry for the interruption.
Nope.
It was January 29th. I know, and I don't know why, because I just remember dates. It was January 29th. Yep.
I thought it was spring, but it was January.
And they implement, and then they start, had students using it by March. That's what we can tell you.
Yep, they did the first pilot in March.
Yep, thank you.
So though we have it through K through 5, it looks like it does have a, up to eighth grade. Are we thinking about adding it to the middle school curriculum? We have looked at it. I will tell you, number one, it's super, super expensive. Now, that doesn't mean that's, that's our sole decision, just because it is expensive, but that is something that we are, we're looking at, at least piloting it in some classrooms, because of course, we want some results, middle school, because it is different at different levels, elementary as a whole, then middle school, and even high school. So, but we have already begun those conversations for middle school.
Is there, like, one of the life labs it could tie in with or something? Or one of their experiential, you know, that they go through?
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you ladies and the innovativeness of working with this, because I'm a Waterloo native, and I went to school in Waterloo and graduated. And back then, John Deere was just a plant where lots of my friends' parents worked. You know, I mean, we knew nothing about it at school, and this interactive and being supportive. I know you've always been on board with the Career Center, but just all these other areas, and obviously, education has evolved greatly since I've been in high school, but I just know that the kids get to know what that big building is, and, you know, rather than driving by and, "Wow, what do they do there? Oh, they make green tractors." You know, I mean, that, and so I just think it's awesome that you're taking advantage of this opportunity and really collaborating with the district and focusing on areas that are utmost important. So thank you, guys, both, for all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Super exciting. Sorry, Jessie.
Yeah. No, and I really appreciate the partnership as well. You know, I have, you know, the blessing of being able to work inside of Deere as well and see it a little bit on both sides, and, you know, one of my friends who actually is a production worker, I think, is taking one of those, one of positions for, he gets to help with career and stuff, and he's so excited about that, and we've been friends for many years. And, you know, just, well, I see the impact of, you know, the mentorship part, some of the groups that even their partners, like SWE, they, they had a mentorship program with our schools for female, to get them into STEM. That was just amazing. I've seen the results of that, some of the robotics stuff we've had, and just some of this engagement is just, it is so amazing, I think, where we're going, and I just, it's great to be able to be a part of both organizations, be able to, you know, volunteer time for the area and help, and just knowing that, helping also, you know, the community understand the challenges we have, our district, and what we need to overcome some of the challenges, and that's really appreciated, so.
So you get to put this accountable on both ends, is that what you're saying?
It's great.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'd just like to lobby a little bit. I've been in my soapbox lately for, what kids need is vision and hope, and especially in, you know, there's a lot of negativism in the world today, and, you know, if you're our age, you know, this too shall pass, but if you're in fourth grade, it may seem like a lot, a lot, you know, the world is pretty negative. So anything you can do, and this program seems like it's very much in line with this, but give them the vision of what can be and the hope that they personally can be. And so those are the two overarching themes that I think this program addresses, but whatever you can do to underscore those would be great.
I actually just made a note, because with our community outreach, we've already got our mission, kind of our requirements and mission statement pulled together, and our focus for Fiscal 22 put together. It aligns to it, but I took that away, Lyle, to make sure we're actually meeting Wednesday on some stuff, so I'll, I'll go lobby for that, for sure. So, because our biggest thing is not just John Deere, right? It's about showing the students what they're, what is even possible. If you, it doesn't always have to, yes, we love STEM, but if not, there's people, there's accounting, there's HR, there's all these different supply management, there's so many different opportunities. And when we look at the community outreach things we're looking to do, it covers the whole gamut of getting them interested in something and know there's possibilities at many different businesses in our community, because we want to make this a place where people can thrive, so.
Yeah, and I think that ties me back to the bigger picture of the community. We've talked a lot about the education and the home community piece, but the community, right? And so to make sure our, we, again, the largest, largest pool of students, right, that, you know, we want to make sure everybody can read. We want to make sure everybody can do basic math. We want to make sure everybody can get a degree. We want to make sure everybody can be employable. We want to make sure, you know, employability can do great things for our community. Making sure everybody can read can do good things for our community. If we look at incarceration rates and just, you know, the number of people, the percentage of those incarcerated that can't read, you know, just, there's lots of opportunities. And so we're not to put our, you know, to get our foot right here at home with our youth, especially in the elementary grade. So yeah, vision and hope, I think that's, I think that's an awesome message.
Thank you both so much for this, and we are, we clearly are excited about it, so stay tuned. I think you'll be back giving us an update soon on all the awesome projects.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. Thanks.
I just wanted to say, it was very nice to have two women doing it. It was great, so.
Well, and we also, we were smiling. We very much appreciate these young ladies we heard doing the Pledge of Allegiance, too.
Yes, your Pledge of Allegiance so loud was fantastic.
I know. Is that great?
Very proud, very proud, so, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we'll move on then to our consent agenda, and tonight, that consists of nine items. The minutes of the, oh, well, hang on, just a second. Well, the minutes of the August 23rd, 2021, regular board meeting, and the September 1st, 2021, special board meeting, item B. The personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item C. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is item D. A grant from the Whole Kids Foundation, which is item E. A donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, which is item F. A West High music trip to Chicago, Illinois, which is item G. The Lowell Furniture Change Order 01, item H. The adjusted 2021-2022 board meeting dates, item I. And the joint representation and conflict waiver, which is item J. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item C, Charlie, please.
Item C, Charlie.
B, E, F, G, H, and J. Sorry.
All right, so that leaves items D, I, D and I. Can I get a motion to put those two on the table, please?
Sub move.
Thanks, India and Jessie. All those in favor, then, of approving items D and I, please signify by saying, by saying "I."
"I."
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes "I." Motion carried. That takes us to item B, which is on page 2, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approved the minutes of the August 23rd, 2021, regular board meeting.
Sub move.
And the September one. Oh, sorry, it's not in the...okay. And then, and the Board of Education approved the minutes of the September 1st, 2021, special board meeting.
Sub move.
Thank you. They're both in that same thing. Sorry.
I just need to abstain from the 23rd. I wasn't here. I just need to abstain from the 23rd, I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. I don't think in general you need to do that normally, but I'm just saying going forward, but, so. I think you're gonna approve them just after you read them, is that right? Okay, perfect, okay. So then all those in favor of approving item B, which includes both the 20, August 23rd and the September 1st special board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. All right, then that takes us to personnel appointments and adjustments.
I move the Board of Education to approve the personnel items as listed.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse, in discussion?
I just noticed there's a few changes of assignments, but I guess, what can you tell us about how stable the classes are? Do we think we've pretty much got the number of classrooms in each, uh, each school locked in, and in each grade level? So what changes can we anticipate, or there's still a couple that are iffy depending on future enrollment? Where are we at?
Yeah, I would say, um, in general, we are pretty much where we're gonna stay for staffing. There are still some changes that may yet happen, um, but not necessarily regards to enrollment, more just some, just general staffing changes to that extent. But I would say, and I can actually send a report through a weekly update. We, um, we, we did a really good job with our elementary staffing as far as, you know, getting our class sizes down to the lowest that I've been since I've been here, on average across the board, which is about two to three kids less. So that's, that's something that we're at. Now, again, should we, you know, and that's on average. Would we, would we like some additional teachers to get that even lower? Yes, but right now, our staffing is, is pretty, is gonna stay pretty static for the remainder of the year. Again, absent, barring any unforeseen changes.
Are we pretty solid on the virtual then also? And I asked, I asked that question, if, if students are moving back and forth, are we still able to make, you're shaking your head, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I was just answering the back and forth. We're really trying to stick not to the back and forth, however, we are, of course, looking at case by case basis.
But yes, staffing right now for virtual is, is static as well, and will, will be static. Again, barring any unforeseen changes.
Can you explain a little bit about the homeschool assistance facilitator?
Yeah, absolutely, so.
I don't think that's been on the board since I've, on the agenda since I've.
Well, you know, I think what happened, I don't believe this particular position has been on the board agenda. But what we, what we did was, you know, because it's, I guess the reason why it hasn't been on the board agenda is because it's very, um, it's almost like a contracted service, in a sense. However, because lack, because of just wanting to make sure that you were aware of it, it showed up on the board agenda. And basically, you know, nothing has changed, or I shouldn't say nothing has changed. Typically, we have somebody in our homeschool assistance facilitator position. What's changed, uh, maybe recently, I shouldn't say recently. And then typically, Jane, help me out here, Jane, there's, there's some times where we have additional individuals, which you can see from the assistance teacher, that have come on board. I'm just thinking, I don't know past my tenure, but I know that once I got, once I was here, there were two individuals, one that was a facilitator, and one that was assistant teacher. We then look at numbers every year, sometimes those numbers decrease, and so we just need the facilitator to help support. They have increased since COVID, and so we have, you know, we have that, that assistant teacher coming back to us.
Yeah, I can just share a little bit. So districts have the option to employ a homeschool assistance teacher. Not all districts do. It is a district option, and so for years and years and years, we did not have that option for our parents. You could homeschool, or you could attend school. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna say, it has happened since I've been in the central office, which has been 16 years. So I would say some point in time, we decided to start offering that program. There is a funding structure through the per pupil, um, funding that, that does come. So they count, students who are homeschooled, they can, there's two options. They could dual enroll, which means they take part in something in our buildings, that's one option. And they also can have the homeschool assistance teacher, that's another option. So they could have both, they could have neither, they could have one or the other, so they could be duly enrolled without a homeschool assistance teacher, or they can have the homeschool assistance teacher without dual enrolled, or both or neither. So they, and then the funding formula follows that. So I believe we get point three funding for, point three of the per pupil, um, expenditure for, for students who choose to do the homeschool assistance teacher. And then there is an entire handbook that talks about what the, what the requirements are. If you are, if you are a parent who is homeschooling, and you want to take advantage of the dual enrollment teacher, then you have to meet with them 16 times a year. There's a variety of things that have to, and then you get, you know, you get, you can get help with lesson planning, you can get help with whatever. But what has happened is we, we do have families choosing this, there's fewer families that don't get any assistance at all through homeschooling. That, you know, the years of just saying, I'm just gonna homeschool without anything, is, there's just not as many. Most of them are taking advantage of virtual, or they're taking advantage of the, they call it HASAP, H-A-S-A-P. I'm not sure why they pronounce it that way, it seems like it should be H sap, but it's HASAP, um, if you talk to somebody in the, in the state. So that's kind of how that works, and then it's just on a per pupil, it is a contracted service that we have done, um, over the past year. So we've had it for a long time, I'm gonna say maybe a dozen years or better. And we do have a few students who open and roll into Waterloo for that purpose, to get access to our homeschool assistance teacher. So the, the people that are served are not all resident Waterloo students, there are some who open and roll here for the service.
So where do they meet?
Um, wherever, so they can meet, um, this, this person has an office at Greenbrier, so sometimes they'll come into Greenbrier, sometimes they will meet in the person's home, sometimes they will meet at a library, they eat, they meet wherever the agreement is, so, um, they.
We have somebody.
I, I bet you do, so, yes. So it just depends, I mean, I've, I've, sometimes they meet at McDonald's, to be honest. It's just, you know, supporting the fam, the homeschool family, however, works for them. And so the, the Katie and the, um, there's, is there assistant two on that? Yeah, so they, I mean, they'll, and the reason there's two is because sometimes there's a limit on how many one person can serve. And so if you exceed that, if you have more people asking for that service, then you have to have a second person, so.
Has there been a change in the accounting for, for homeschool students? I think I heard, I don't know, a couple of months ago, the state said there were X number of kids that were homeschooled. In the past, it seemed like they said, we don't know, we don't even keep track. What's changed?
They, I do not believe that the state actually knows now, because when they enacted the CPI, which is the competent private instruction, which is what we've always had, and then they, um, they, they enacted IPI, which is independent public, private instruction, right? Independent private instruction. And so in that one, the, the students don't, we don't in some cases even know that there is a child, that on IPI, they just, they just don't, they don't enroll, they don't let us know, we might not even know, we wouldn't know the student's name, we don't know anything about a student's family who chooses IPI nor with the state. So we don't, we do report the number of students who are CPI, um, competent private instruction, that just means that they're gonna file the form, and they're gonna, you know, and usually they'll do CPI if they want to have some dual enrollment opportunities. But no, we do not know how many families are on IPI now.
So what's the, how do those students eventually end up getting a diploma of some kind?
They do not.
They go strictly into worker college?
They could, yeah, and they would have to, there's a competency, RGD, they would have a, I mean, to do in a, to go into a college, they would probably have to demonstrate some type of a competency testing to, to go into a post-secondary institution of some kind.
Okay, thank you.
Do we provide any, like, materials then with the CPI one?
Yep, we sure do.
Thank you.
We sure do.
Oh, and do we provide food? I'm just wondering if that's part of it.
No, we do not, um, no.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item E, which these awesome students have patiently been waiting for. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the $3,000 grant from the Whole Kids Foundation to support an outdoor classroom at Highland Elementary School.
Sub move.
All right, I got Astor and, Jester, yeah, okay, there we go. All right.
So I'm Carrie Taylor, and I work at Highland and Expo, and I am the ELP teacher of these wonderful fifth graders. I wrote a grant and actually got it, which was exciting, from the Whole Kids grant, and it is $3,000, so we had to come in front of the board. The children have already talked to Marty Metcalf, we're trying to do an outdoor classroom right by our gardens. It's actually an ag grant, but it's to put a classroom out there, so we don't have to keep going back and forth and wasting time. Plus, what a best thing for COVID is to have outdoor classrooms. And I already had a grant for some picnic tables that we weren't able to do yet because of COVID. We were gonna go to the Waterloo Career Center and make them with Mr. Littie. And I also have a little money from Partners in Ed to do a shed, so we're gonna just add it all together for our, our outdoor area. Did you guys get the Master Gardener map? Did you guys get that? Just asking.
We got the agreement from the Whole Kids Foundation, but I do not believe that we have that. But I know we would absolutely love to see it, and I'm sure we can get it. Can we keep that, or do you want us? Okay, super, okay.
That's from the Master Gardener that I've been working with this summer, and she's gonna come and work with the kids also, so she's really excited about that too. We also have Steven Ilers from the Iowa State Extension Office that is gonna be working with us. And Sarah Steimeier, which is from Black Hawk Nutrition, she's already working with the girls. And of course, I just told you about Waterloo Career Center, we do want to make the picnic tables and maybe the shed there. We're not sure, that's kind of a little high level. But we did make the raised beds at the Community Maker Space about four years ago with my fourth and fifth grade that were there then. So I know how to do that, so that's good. So those are the people that we will be working with, and want them to introduce themselves, because they are gonna be the ones that are heading this up. They're the ones that are dreaming big. Okay, so Sheray, are you going first? Go ahead, it's okay.
And you can pull that microphone down, sweetheart, there you go.
Say your name, and I'll bring you in, okay?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sheray Elise, Elise Bit Devrocks, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Addison, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Ari, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Sabina, and I'm a fifth grader at Highland Elementary.
Excellent.
Now, they do have a little information about outdoor classrooms, if you want to be persuaded about that?
You bet.
All right.
Step right up, ladies, let's go.
Don't be shy.
We don't bite.
The top part. If you wanna do the bottom part, you can. Yeah, read the top part. They have two parts, because we talked to Marty, and he gave us some ideas.
Gotcha.
So do both parts.
The re, the reason why we want to have outdoor classroom is so kids will be able to see nature blooming. And also, and kids in the future will be able to be creative, independent, and to connect with each other. Marty Metcalf said to check out the new seating at the Waterloo Career Center that the hospitality area put in.
Studies say that outdoor classrooms help students develop a sense of self-independence, confidence, creativity, decision-making, problem-solving skills, empathy towards others, motor skills, and self-discipline. Outdoor classrooms will help make our school a better place, according to Outdoor Education. Marty Metcalf said to look into sunshades to block the sun as an alternative.
I would really like to have an outdoor classroom, because there would be less germs going on each other, and you could take your mask off so that you could breathe better. Also, you can be closer to the garden for lessons and enjoy the fresh air. Marty Metcalf liked the shed idea and asked about the Waterloo Career Center.
I think that outdoor classrooms are important, because it helps you get fresh air while still learning. The World Health Organization recommends outdoor classroom learning as a way for schools to continue in-person learning. Research shows that taking classes outside promotes a healthier lifestyle, like children animation and nature network. Marty Metcalf said to try an ag lime instead of cement to save on costs.
So as you can see, we did have Marty come in and talk to us.
Yes.
We did give them all ideas and things to research, so ag lime instead of cement, um, do the sunshades instead of doing like a pavilion, because that's kind of what we were looking at, something like that, that was metal. He said that the district can actually put those sunshades up and take them down in the winter. So he is giving us some ideas, but he is very excited about what we could be doing with this money, and what we can be doing with that area that he did check out.
You got, and you say the raised beds are gonna be part of this as well?
Say that one more time.
The raised beds.
The raised beds are already done and already in place.
Okay.
I did that about four years ago.
I don't know, but Lou Henry has them too, they got, they do a lot of, the, that person that saves the seeds every year and stuff, so he might be able to do some collaboration with.
We do the same thing, plus we have grow stations that I wrote a grant for, so they actually grow, and last year, do you wanna tell them what you did?
What'd you grow last year?
You wanna do the hydro garden? No? Well, we did the hydro lettuce, where they actually grew lettuce with water, and they planted the seeds and got to see how that works too. So they've had a lot of experience. I also go into every single classroom and teach garden lessons, except because of COVID, I'm not doing that. But we were doing garden lessons in every single grade, so, and that's what we use the raised gardens for. So each one is actually marked for the different grade. So kindergarten does pumpkins, and we go out and see the vines, and they sing a song, and they do all those things. So if we could have the outside garden, we could actually do more, because taking kindergarten out to the, to the beds takes about half the time, by the time we get them back. So, um, that's one of the reasons why we want the outdoor classroom. And we also want it for the teachers to be able to use, not just the garden lessons. So that's a big deal.
Do you have water out there?
We do.
Good.
And water keys, which is really important.
Yes, okay.
What, what side of the building is it located on?
So this is actually located, if you know the building very well, you know how we have the fork? Between the second and third, and the fourth and fifth, is that fork, that's where the raised beds are. So they're kind of back by the lower elementary playground, does that make any sense at all?
South side, north side, east side.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm directionally challenged, sorry.
Closer to the trailer?
Trailer, we don't have a trailer.
In reference to Expo?
Yes, the trailer court is on that side, sorry, thank you.
Yes.
Should've had you guys answer that question.
I think this is a fantastic idea, I love it. And I love the collaboration, it should work with so many different entities, so that's amazing. I am curious to know how many students, I know that you brought four with you, but how many other students will be involved in this?
So these guys are gonna be the researchers and the planners. I also will be bringing in my fourth grade ELP, but in the long range, everyone's gonna be able to use that area.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And ladies, you did a great job. I appreciate the fact that, I know it's kind of scary to, to stand up here and speak, but you did awesome. And you were super to wait in the agenda until you were, we got to this, so I appreciate all of that, thank you.
And thank you for your extra efforts of looking for the grants and finding them, and it sounds like you've, you've got multiple. And that's just awesome, because it just adds an additional layer onto the learning, and so thank you for doing that. And do you ever consider having like recycling bins out in this area?
Ooh, we actually had a picture of one of those that had like garbage bags and garbage cans and recycling, and Addie really liked that idea. So that is something that we are gonna start looking into. Right now, Highland does not have recycling, so that is something that we are gonna try to look into.
Good job, girls.
Yes.
So will we get an invitation then, when things are ready to go?
Can we come visit?
Yes, definitely, please.
Awesome.
More workshop.
Right, I'll, I'll take a salad with whatever hydroponically you, you grow, okay?
So we'll have to see if Hawkeye actually brought in the hydro pool set, it was awesome. We had a salad party, and everybody thought we were like, what does that stand for? I'm like, no, really, seriously, we had a salad party. And we had the lunch ladies came and brought cheese for us, and they brought, um, what else? Oh, ranch dressing, so we could really have a salad party. That, that's what we did at the end of the year, last year, so, we got to enjoy that too, so.
You've worked hard, girls.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll look for our invitation. We'll look for our invitation, you guys, thank you. All right, well, I realized I put this on the table and then we didn't vote on it, but good that we got to hear all that. So all those in favor of approving the grant for the Whole Kids Foundation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F. And this is a donation from RJ McElroy. And the recommendation here is that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude this donation in the amount of $4,900 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2021-2022 Youth Emergency and Opportunity Fund as presented.
Second.
And discussion. Thanks Stacy, I don't know who pulled this.
Yeah, I just pulled it just so we can say thank you and recognize that we're receiving this continued support.
I'll make sure they hear about it. And I will abstain tonight because I actually am an employee of the RJ McElroy Trust. So it's a really gracious thing they do. All right, all those in favor then of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And chair abstains, motion pass, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is item G. And this is a music trip. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High students and staff to Chicago, Illinois from April 8th through the 10th of 2022. Thanks, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Astor, and any discussion? Don't know if we have anybody here tonight, I thought we did, yeah, yeah, there they are, I was like, wait a minute.
Ms. Garrity.
Hi, Ms. Garrity.
When, uh, when my daughter saw this, because you know, we didn't have the last one?
Yes.
When my sophomore saw this, she was like jumping up and down, so I can't wait to hear.
It's a long time in the planning. Will you two introduce yourselves just for our viewers? And if you wanna highlight a few things, and then certainly I think we might have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'm Erin Garrity Williams. I am the orchestra teacher, guitar teacher, and now we do a songwriting and composition class over at West High.
Super.
Uh, Luke Overton, I'm vocal music, AP Music Theory, guitar, and co-teaching songwriting and composition.
Great, welcome. All right, board, do you have questions about this trip?
Can you just go over some of the highlights so people can hear it, because it's a really cool trip?
Sure. I guess our biggest highlight, we wanted to find a way to get our students exposed to what it might look like to go on in music post-high school. And so we, uh, we arranged with Vandercook University, which is a school on the south side of Chicago that kind of specializes in music education and music students specifically. Uh, they're gonna host us for an afternoon of clinics with the band, the choir, and the orchestra. So the students will get to engage with university professors and university students and perform for them and then get feedback and, uh, sort of tips and performance practice and things like that from someone that's at a university level. As well as kind of getting to see if they chose to move on in music, what that might look like in terms of what their daily life would be, what campus would be like, the kind of classes they would take. Uh, and really see it firsthand rather than just us telling about it, um, getting able to see a campus and see all that.
Then of course, because we're in Chicago, we're gonna see our Chicago highlights. Um, one of the, the big fun things is that we're going to see them to, uh, to a performance of the Moulin Rouge. Um, based on the, the 2001 movie, it should be an incredibly exciting performance. But for our students to get to see a performance of that level on that kind of a stage with absolute professional magnificent performers and costumes, it should be very exciting for our students. Um, then of course, we will partake in some Chicago deep dish style pizza. Um, an afternoon at Navy Pier, uh, the Museum of Science and Industry. Um, they have a choice between the Field Museum and the Shed Aquarium. Uh, then we will also, what am I missing?
Willis Tower.
Oh yes, so we get to see the Willis Tower. I told them they have to be brave enough to go up that many stories and stand on the glass floor. Uh, but I think that kind of covers the highlights of the trip, were there any other questions?
Well, and the bean.
Oh, yes, we will have our picture taken at the bean.
So have you gotten any responses from the surveys that went on? Do you have enough people interested that you feel like you'll be able to move forward?
Yes, we'll definitely have enough to, um, to go forward. I think right now, just as you know how well students reply to surveys, that I think we have about 56 students confirmed right now. And we'll have an informational meeting on Thursday to hopefully kind of solidify a few more participants.
It was really positive when we put this trip together. We originally crossed, you know, the country, uh, with Florida, New York in the past. And with the cost of transportation and everything going up, that trip was starting to approach fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars per student, which for some students, that's not an issue. But for a growing percentage of our, our choir band and orchestra students, it just was not a reality. And so by looking at more regional locations, uh, that were within a lot easier trip, uh, distance on bus, we can get the cost down to a level that nothing's official till the, the money changes hands and everybody's signed up. But even with the informal, uh, discussion, way, way, way more students see that as a attainable possibility versus fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
And how are you going to do fundraising, what are you doing for fundraising?
That's a great question because we actually just reached out, uh, to Dan Huff this afternoon to get more guidance on that. That has been an area that has changed quite a bit in terms of state law as to what's permitted and how it can be accounted and spent and kept track of. So we just reached out to get more guidance on that to see where that is. I know there was some big cases two years ago where there was some oversight that wasn't followed and.
Sue, there's some weird things, like if you, if you fundraise together, like deciding where it can go and what, or if it can, has to be split up among everybody. We ran into that last time we were going to Florida too, so it just makes it difficult.
Is here, our finance manager and Jeff Summerfall in that office probably would be a good contact for you.
Sure, yeah.
If you do any events or, or have, you know, keep us all informed as a board because, um, we would like to help or attend.
Absolutely, yeah.
And thank you both for your efforts and like putting it together. I know even sometimes just getting it all down on paper is hurtly and so thank you for making that.
We're excited.
Yeah, it's really awesome, very happy about it.
This kind of signaled like some normality.
Yes.
For the kids again, so we really appreciate it.
And I've had a hard two years of cancellations, so.
Yeah, super. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have the motion on the table, so all those in favor of approving the West High music trip, uh, to Chicago, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Lowell Furniture Change Order. And this is item H. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the Lowell Furniture Change Order 01 at an additional cost of $23,436.17 to purchase the K1 patterned ottoman from Office Concepts. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Awesome, and we have some samples of the ottomans here tonight. And who, who seconded that? Was it India?
Yeah.
India, sorry, I should've said that out loud. All right, Jane, I don't know if the board has any questions, but someone pulled this, so I'm guessing somebody had a question.
Yeah, I did, because when we were talking about the comfort level with the ottomans, you know, and then it was the difference in price between plain and, and patterned. I'm getting into things that are way over my normal head. But if they're that much, if they're that much more comfortable, would it be worth just getting them in the plain fabric whether, rather than patterned? I mean, I, I was trying to see what the difference was, but there's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, sorry, I, I tried to keep it really simple. Um, did you guys get in your attachment, like a document that showed fabrics? And it, did we send that out? No, okay.
No.
So let me show you an example here, a second. So the school, um, the way that it is currently set up is, um, each grade is represented by a color. So like kindergarten has yellow, so that is, their accent walls are yellow, there's gonna be some yellow in the carpet. Um, and so every grade kind of has their own color. And then as we were putting together color palettes for the furniture of what's going in the spaces, um, the classroom chairs themselves and the stools that are going, um, in the classrooms, because there's movable stools, and then there's ottomans, which are a couple of the samples up there. Those are not in the colors, they're just samples that we had. So those are, um, in all of the classrooms and in some of the shared areas also. Um, and the, the, um, original ottoman that was chosen was the KI one. And that was based on, um, comfort level for the most part. Um, and so it's the shorter blue one that you see up there. The ottomans actually come in two different sizes, so some of them will be the 14-inch high ones for the littler kids and then, um, 18-inch high for the, for the older kids. And, um, as we were looking at the overall colors of what's going in the classroom, so the typical classroom chairs are all like a, um, charcoal gray color so that chairs can be moved around if you need a bigger chair or a smaller chair in your classroom, rather than it being a specific color for those grades. Um, and so the chairs in there are kind of a neutral color, I would call them. And so we're trying to bring in some color into those spaces. And so the ottomans were the way that we could bring in color. Um, we can do them all in solid yellow, but the, um, staff that looked at them wanted to do a combination. So there's four ottomans in each classroom. And so two were gonna be patterned and two were gonna be neutral. And so for example, this is the just non-patterned fabric. But then the patterned fabric that goes along with it is this one here. So it's just having a combination of not just plain, but adding this in. The other thing that this pattern does is it pulls together the other colors that are all used throughout the building. So that way you're getting representation, so whatever space you go into, everything is similar, but something to kind of pull everything together. And then, so there's different colors of them based on what, feel like, uh.
It's the same patterns, it's just different colors.
Different colors, yes, correct. Um, we also have, there's an, a pattern that this is the, um, staff chairs are all in this pattern. So it's like the patterns all kind of work together. Um, but as far as what the kids sit in, um, this is the, the pattern that they have versus just having it all be a solid color. And so when, when we originally specified the KI, which is the shorter blue one sample up there, um, and you're welcome to sit in them if you'd like, um, they were in our office and every, all the different groups came in and sat in them. And you can tell when you sit in it, it's a little cushier, it's a little bit more comfortable. And the difference, the other difference in, they won't be this way, but the sample that we have, the one has, yeah. It's a, I mean, you can tell it's a big difference. Um, the one has castors on it, they will not have castors on them, it just happens to be the sample that we have. Um, but.
Jane, everybody's worried about getting back up from the stool.
Oh, okay, so they don't wanna sit in it.
That's what we're talking about up here.
Oh, okay.
Stacy made it look so graceful, but the rest of us not so much.
So you could tell there's a difference, there's a comfort difference. And so when, um, when the dealers were bidding on the furniture, they will come to us and say, hey, can we bid this alternate? And so they submit paperwork that all shows like the heights are the same, the diameter is the same, the warranty is the same. And then we say, okay, well, if everything is the same, then you're welcome to go ahead and provide pricing for that. So after the board meeting, when we approved the bids, um, they came back and said the testing for the fabric of the pattern did not get approved for the less expensive one, which is the taller one that is sitting there. Um, and so then, just because of how they're sewing, I don't know how their sewing method goes together, but however it works, it doesn't work with that particular ottoman. So it's not like really bidding apples to apples when you're looking at those, um.
So we have to adjust to the slightly more expensive, to, in order for it to be covered with that fabric, it needs to be on the slightly more expensive stool.
Correct, correct. And you are welcome to not use the patterned fabric, that's totally an option. Um, we just felt like it was what kind of pulled everything together in the school. And I know when the, when the bids originally came out, we actually took both ottomans to Lowell School and Carrie and several of her staff members, and I think there was a couple of students too that came by. And everybody sat in them and they said, we really like the, the blue one better, you know, because it was more comfortable. Um, but they're like, but if everything is the same, you know, if, meaning also the fabric, and Carrie did mention, do we still get the same fabric? And I said, yes, because at the time I thought that they did. Um, then she said, if everything is the same, there's no reason to spend more on the softer one. We can go ahead and go with the harder one. Um, but now it's not all the same, so.
That option is no longer available.
Correct, correct.
And Jane, I just wanna echo what you said about, the staff did have input on this. And the staff, I, at least what I heard is the staff really would like to have the mix of the solid and the pattern both.
Correct.
I thi, and I think they are pretty clear about that, but I just want the rest of the board to know that too, so.
So are you gonna have solids in all different colors or just the yellow?
Nope, in every classroom, so like first grade is green, so they have this, and then this is their patterned one with it.
Because I thought you said yellow and I thought, won't everyone think those are for kindergarten? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so every grade has their own like solid color. Um, and then there's the patterned one that goes with it.
Question about the yellow.
Yes.
Uh, the durability. Uh, I, I just curious, I, I saw that, I'm like, oh god, it's dirty already. Like I could just imagine it being dirty.
So these are all the other thing you, you can't see. And I'm happy to leave these with you guys if you would like to touch them, afresh of them, whatever. Um, everything that we have picked here, these are all vinyls. So I, I don't know if you can tell that from here, probably not. But they're all vinyls, they're able to be cleaned, they, um, a lot of them, and actually this one here actually has like antimicrobial, so stuff is not supposed to grow on it or anything. So that is something that we also look at prior to selecting finishes, is making sure that they're durable, um, easy to maintain, because Marty Metcalf wouldn't like it if it wasn't easy to maintain. I just had to throw his name out there, that was funny, he was in the last one a lot.
He Metcalf suggested.
Yes, yes, so yeah, but good question, yep.
Thank you for bringing the supplies, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so what we're, what we're going for then is the more comfortable one with patterns.
Correct, correct, yes.
Because the other option wasn't available.
Right.
Yep.
So you'll still have two, you know, like in each classroom, two that have a pattern and two that are solid. And then we also have those in the shared resource areas and then also in the, um, media center that has a bunch of those in there too.
Just one more question, how, what kind of, um, is there like a warranty on this kind of furniture? I mean, I've never bought like expensive furniture, so.
Yeah, yeah, um, the, I think, I think they're 25 years, um, warranty on them. And then, um, a, a lot of them are like, well, and these ottomans are kind of easy because they don't really have parts that are gonna, you know, break or have adjustability and stuff, but, um, yeah. I think they're 25.
I definitely will not be able to get up out of that in 25 years.
Oh.
Yeah, just saying.
Laos' answer was worse.
I know, we're making jokes up here, it's bad, so, okay. Anything else then for Jane about the, uh, fabrics and the change order?
No, I'm just glad we can get the more comfortable ones.
And just making sure that like pen or marker comes off real good?
Yep, that's the other thing that, um, all of the fabrics have like a, well, every manufacturer calls them different things, but they're write-off protection and you're able to clean them off easily. And especially because of like COVID and all the different cleaning chemicals, I feel like every, people have kind of beefed up their, um, finishes they put on things. But everything that we have is able to be like bleach cleanable and, um, marker to come off of them and.
And so the warranty also covers punctures?
Um, majority of these, I think, I think all of these that we picked are supposed, are supposed to be puncture-proof.
Maybe not with any.
Like they, they claim that.
Don't tell the kids.
Yes. Well, yes.
Yeah, we're not gonna test, test run that tomorrow, but. All right. All right, anything further? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the, uh, change order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carries. That takes us to our last. That takes us to our last item on the consent agenda, which is the joint representation and conflict waiver. This is item J. And the recommendation here is that the Board of Education hire Aylers and Cooney PC to represent Waterloo schools as requested by EMC Insurance.
Sub move.
Sub here.
And discussion. Don't know who pulled this one either.
Stacy.
Just wanted to have it explained so I understand exactly what this means.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be wanted to do that if you'd like. Yes, for sure. So, uh, we were notified last week that there was a, a lawsuit, um, a, a complaint that had been filed at the state level. Um, it was, it had named several plaintiff or several defendants. Um, it had named the governor. It had named the director of education. And it had named some districts, um, because there were some individual student families who were, um, had filed part, who were part, who had joined the complaint. Um, and the complaint just meaning the legal term for a lawsuit. So, um, those, those eleven individuals represented ten school districts, I believe. I've got my numbers right. And so in Waterloo Schools was one of them. We had one family that had joined that, um, that complaint. And so, um, as, as the public probably knows, or, or well, may or may not know that, um, we have legal insurance for when we, there would be a lawsuit. And so our carrier for our legal coverage or legal insurance is EMC. Which is also the case for out of the ten different districts, nine of them also utilize EMC. One of the districts uses a different carrier. Um, so the nine districts, EMC, usually we call EMC right away if there's any kind of a complaint. And, and just because we need to notify them that there could be a, um, a, some kind of coverage or some kind of a, a settlement or legal expense. And so they advised us that they had done some investigation. They really wanted all nine of us to use the same attorney, attorney to represent us. And so, um, and they had asked for us to use Aylers and Cooney. So that, that's what this is. So really what we're signing right now is actually just a signature that says, yes, we will use the coverage of Aylers and Cooney. We're selecting them as our legal representative in this particular complaint. And they will be doing, just correct me, all, nine of the ten? Is that what you said? Yeah, they'll be representing nine of the ten. And then I, I believe the, the state of Iowa, they've selected a different attorney. And then I, I think the, I'm not sure who the, who's representing the Department of Ed. And then I'm also not sure who's representing that 10th district because it's not ours. Right. Okay. Procedural for us.
So like, do we know what is, what's being asked? Like, is it a monetary settlement? Or I, I guess I don't know enough about the legal stuff.
Right. In the complaint, the plaintiffs, um, are questioning the authority of, of the state of Iowa, um, of Governor Reynolds to utilize, to prohibit districts from enacting a mask mandate. So it, it really is a, um, what I would call a, a local control lawsuit. Um, it's a lawsuit asking districts to regain local control. Um, for the reason of, um, students who are medically fragile. Um, not being able to, to feel like they could attend school at the same rate or the same, in the same way that other non-medically fragile students would. So, um, saying that the, the mask mandate at the state level prohibits district, districts from enacting a mask mandate that they believe, that the plaintiffs believe is necessary for their children to be able to come to school. How'd I do Kingsley? Pretty good?
Good. Just one clarification. And then, Jane, you might have mentioned, I might have missed it, is that, um, so this was legislation that she signed. It wasn't an executive order for Governor Reynolds. So it's, it's legislation that they're actually making the complaint against.
But Governor Reynolds is named in the lawsuit and I don't believe the legislator, legislature is, right? Because she signed off on the legislators. So it was, it was legislation from our House and our Senate that came forward. Governor Reynolds signed it. And so they did not, I don't believe they named senators and House of Representatives, you know, and representatives who sign, who, who, um, voted on the law. Um, so we, yeah, and so, and I'm going to actually make some comments during my superintendent portion just of, you know, maybe to give you a little bit update on some, um, like things that have happened over the last couple hours.
But, and then Jane, explain why these ten districts were chosen.
Yep, the, just, yep, to reiterate that the, the ten districts that were named as defendants are named that way because there were individual families in each of those districts. So, um, that, that joined the complaint. And so they named the district that those students resided in. So of the eleven families that joined the complaint, there were ten different districts. I believe there were two stu, two of the eleven students resided in Ankeny. So Ankeny was named only once, even though there were two separate students. Waterloo was named because one of the, um, one of the complainants resides in Waterloo.
So this is like a, a call to action or change and it's not a monetary lawsuit, right? Or I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, the, I mean, that's the, the, the. Right now. That's what it is right now. Yeah. It may, may get to that point.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Just trying to wrap my head around it all.
It's, and it's pretty deep legalese, so. Yeah, so. All right. Well, anything else? Then all those in favor of approving the representation, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. All right. So we got through the consent agenda. Woo-hoo. All right. So they'll move on to item K, which is the superintendent's contract. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education renew the superintendent's contract through June 30th of 2024 with commensurate salary and benefits compensation.
Sub move.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, India. And I'll put a little bit more, uh, some more meat to that bones for, for all of us. Um, so we met, um, September 1st and did Dr. Lindeman's review. Um, I know Andrew, you're here tonight and Andrew wrote an article about it, um, in the newspaper. But, um, it was an extremely favorable, favorable review. It's probably the best review that, not probably, it is the best review that Jane has received and the best one that I've seen since I've been sitting in this chair. Um, and so based on that exceptional review, um, and in light of your performance during the past year, navigating the pandemic, getting your staff in order. I mean, I truly do not believe that the last eighteen months are what anyone would have ever wished for any superintendent or any, any staff in general. Um, so in the past, we've done a series of metrics. And while we use some of those metrics to look at Jane's performance, we decide, we determined as a board that we really felt more comfortable based on your review and how positive it was, just giving a flat percentage. So we will be offering a, a four percent increase on your base salary as well as some commensurate, um, money towards your annuity, a $5,000 toward your annuity tonight. So that's what the package includes. That's what the seven of us agreed to. I mean, we're going to vote on it yes tonight, but that's what we all, uh, discussed and have, and have talked with you about. And I would certainly welcome the rest of the board. I don't want to just blabber on about it myself. But certainly anybody else can weigh in on those awesome comments that we had that night and anything else.
Well, go ahead.
Wow.
Touche.
Make sure you get that. That's not part of the. That is not part of the recommendation, Shans.
Well, I have a few comments. I strongly support this, uh, contract that's offered, uh, to Jane by the board and including her new compensation package. Uh, and here's why. Uh, the leadership challenges that Jane faced this past year are clearly exceeded any of those that I've experienced in my twenty-eight years on the board. So it's in a class by itself. Uh, and it was a challenging year for everyone, you know? But especially for leaders like Jane that are operating, ended up operating in, uh, sometimes loud, uh, fast-paced, uh, the book-stops here environment. Important decisions, uh, came fast and furious. And of course, there was, uh, probably more than the normal amount of Monday morning quarterbacking about that. So it was a difficult environment. But, uh, so, you know, it was a challenging year, but the question becomes, what was the result? Uh, just because it's challenging doesn't mean it's successful. So my observations was that Jane, uh, really has made good decisions that provided a very good balance of three items, three critical interests. Contagious disease considerations, academic considerations, and social and mental welfare of both our students and our staff. Those are the three. In the past, if you look at the mission statement, pretty much academics. This year, the priority of academics was severely challenged by, by the other two. So, uh, you know, and I'll give you a couple of examples of why I support this. Uh, so in retrospect, I think it was clear that offering, uh, both in-person and virtual education last fall was the right choice. Uh, it wasn't so clear at the time. And other top-tier superintendents, uh, made other choices. But I'm very happy about, uh, where you led, led Waterloo on that decision. And I think it bodes well for our students and our community. Uh, another item was accountability and agility. Uh, I was initially bothered by the virtual program that we, uh, adopted. It was a purchase program and it was expedient. But when the feedback revealed that, uh, the program really, uh, was not meeting expectations, it was quickly abandoned and an in-house program was, was put in his, was developed and put in his place. So I think it was a good example of, of keeping a sharp eye on, uh, results. And then good agility and develop an alternative. So I thought that was probably very beneficial, uh, to our kids and a, and a key decision, uh, for a lot of students, especially the virtual students. And then data, uh, you know, Jane's team has compiled comprehensive data on every student, simply because it's in her DNA. But, uh, but that's really been beneficial because now as I understand it, we have good data on every student, where they're at academically, and maybe in other ways as well. And so it sets the stage for recovery, which started, began, it's last summer school already. Uh, and it's continuing today. But so her propensity for, for good data has proved highly beneficial because we know a lot about our students. And then lastly, she worked with the medical experts to let, laid, uh, a really extraordinary effort to comply with the health officials' recommendations of surface cleaning, social distancing, masking, uh, contract tracing, which was not a small task. And then, uh, worked with Kingsley on making, uh, uh, vaccines convenient and available as soon as we could for our staff. So, so that was helpful as well. So given all that, the bottom line to me was Jane made many prudent, uh, decisions in largely uncharted waters. Uh, there was no playbook. There was no, uh, no precedence. Uh, and yet she was able to keep her focus on what's best for kids in the long run and on their wellness, physical and mental, and without abandoning our mission. Some schools kind of chose to abandon their mission. And, uh, and I, I'm really happy we in Waterloo did not do that. So there's a lot more work to be done. Many students, you know, are behind. And some are struggling socially, but all things considered, I think the year was really quite successful. And we're positioned well for, for this next year. So well done, Jane. Thank you.
Thanks, Lyle. Well said. I should have let Lyle lead. Come on. All right, Sue, go ahead.
No, but I, and I, um, I agree with everything you said, Lyle. Um, but I also would just want to bring up that, you know, we did take into consideration what our other groups, our union groups got, our administrative staff got. And tried to keep, um, that in line too, because we know everybody worked really hard this year. And I mean, um, Jane's whole administration team and the, I mean, everyone with the changes and the bus drivers, the lunch, like, you know, all the changes and Dr. Moorehorn's staff as far as, um, and Kingsley's staff. And I mean, it, it was a very, very difficult year. And so, um, if we could, um, just give everybody something, we would do that. But we don't have that. We're not John Deere. But, um, but I just, um, but also I would just like to, um, hit on the pay-for-performance, you know? Um, I've been a real advocate of that since the beginning and going through the metrics. And I know you like that too, Jane. But I think this year was, um, just totally, if we would look at those metrics, they wouldn't even, the ones that I looked at didn't even make sense because we didn't have the opportunity in a lot of those areas to even just touch on or to give kids the chance. And I think what you and your staff and, um, the teaching staff and everyone did was make this year bearable for all kids. It wasn't maybe what was best for all kids because all kids, but we gave the opportunity for kids to still do what they felt comfortable with. Yet they had an opportunity to come to the classroom, which I think was needed. And I just think for the mental health issues, that was one of the main issues that, um, I was just so glad that, um, you took the lead on that and all your meetings with Black Heart County Health. And, and, um, those did not go unnoticed. So, um, totally appreciate your hard work and all staff's hard work in this, again, uncharted territories.
Extraordinary times. Did somebody else buzz in?
So I, you know, I haven't been here much before this all happened. And so, um, I didn't know what a superintendent's job encompassed. And then all of a sudden saw a little bit of it. And then Jane is having to, to manage her normal life, like the rest of us were, trying to figure out with our families and our kids and all that stuff. And at the same time, being responsible for over 10,000 students and is it 1,700 staff members? And, um, it's, I, I can't conceive of that. So I kind of liken it to you swam with, you swam with sharks and you made it out alive. So, um. She got it alive. So, um, yeah, yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
I would say, you know, within that too, you know, not to be overlooked is, you know, we got a couple of big projects going on that she's been leading as well. You know, with, uh, the central remodel and Lowell. And those are big things to have on your plate, but along with a pandemic going on. So, you know, to provide leadership, make sure those, you know, key facility projects are ongoing. And, and even, you know, a much smaller scale, but you know, we kind of, we kind of took some heat in 20 with the graduation being so late and didn't quite get there. But we had a, a good recognition for our students this year, which we, I think we, a lot of us agree that, you know, for some kids, that is a huge moment in life. And we were able to pull together a really good ceremony for those, uh, graduating seniors too. So.
I was going to also note that I appreciate the, in addition to everything, you were able to write some amazing grants to get some amazing money into our community to provide some amazing opportunities for our families and students. So I don't want that to ever go unnoticed because that is huge. I want to say the number, but I'm going to get it wrong. If someone wants to jump in here with it.
Eighteen million?
Eighteen million. So.
To date.
To date. So.
Eighteen million so far.
Yeah. So that's pretty incredible. That's pretty incredible. So, um, I don't know how you do it, but thank you.
Aster, I'm watching you scratch. This is what happens when I go last on the board documents and then I, nothing. Yeah, you go right ahead.
But I love it. I love it. Because everybody says exactly what I need to say. And I don't get to, I don't have to say much. Um, but I am very appreciative of your leadership in the district. Uh, I wrote down, uh, security grants for programming right before India got it. Um, and just your, just your leadership. Uh, it doesn't go unnoticed. Um, I think the compensation was, was definitely, um, well-deserved. Uh, you know, we had to do some different things, but we're in different times. So, um, we appreciate you as a board. I think Lyle and Sue and everybody summed it up perfectly. So.
Did you hear that? I did. You can go back and watch this later. When you're having a bad day, you can just stay, you know, bookmark this meeting and you can go back and listen to all those great things because every single one of them is true. Yep. All right. Anything further, board? I mean, we still got a couple of things, so don't go anywhere mad. But yes, okay. Then all those in favor of approving, uh, the superintendent's contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thanks again, Jane. Thank you very much. Yeah. It was the contract's extension through June of 2024. It's in the, yep. It's in the, yep. Matt, I'm sorry. I'm coming, Matt. I'm coming. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So that takes us to item L, which is our classroom interactive display purchase. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the Promethean Active Panels and Stands from CDWG at a total cost of twenty-one, I'm sorry, $210,825.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, India, and discussion, and welcome to the podium, Mr. Patient O'Brien.
Thank you. I feel like anything I say is going to be a bit of a downer after that, but.
Active panels.
They're exciting, right? New things. Okay. Well, as the board's aware, a standard tool in our classrooms has really become a centralized interactive display, which allows teachers to project and interact with the images and videos that they're projecting, and students to interact with that as well. Lowell has actually been without that, which all of our other classrooms have within the time that they've been at their temporary location. They've just been utilizing non-interactive projectors. So we're really happy to get them to the latest standard or back to the latest standard that the district has. Just a reminder that Promethean Active Panels was identified as the solution that we've been phasing in after we did two focus groups with two different groups of teachers throughout the years. And we're now at the point where they're installed in almost all secondary classrooms, with the exception of the non-remodeled classrooms at Central. Obviously, that will come as that remodel process takes place. But Lowell will actually be the first elementary that receives the interactive panels, the newest generation that we've been installing. So I do also want to note that in addition to the two previous focus groups that we had, we did also do a little bit of a random sampling of some Lowell teachers just to gather feedback as well, just because of two previous focus groups that we had done had been at the high school level, so we wanted to talk to elementary teachers as well, and Active Panels also surfaced as a recommendation from that group as well. So in the proposal before you, the Active Panels themselves have actually come down in price just slightly for a higher model than we bought last time when we bought the high schools this past spring. But the difference in cost actually comes because we're proposing also buying some upgraded stands so that the panels are actually adjustable. At an elementary level, it doesn't really work just to have them at a fixed height on the wall, since obviously the students are shorter. We want to be able to lower the panels so that the students can reach them to interact with them, but then obviously raise them as well, so that students in the back of the room can still see them when the teacher's projecting on them. So if the price looks a little different than it does in the past, that's really what that price has to do with, is the addition of those stands, which is the first time that we've done adjustable stands with the new Active Panels.
Now, on this though, Matt, the list price, we're paying higher than the list price? For the, just the one purchase, but the list price, you're listing $750? Those reverse.
Goodness, I'm sorry, those, no, you know what, I'm sorry, you know what I did, yep. I put the wrong list price there. That list price I know is actually over $1,000, so I think I looked up the wrong list price when I did that. My apologies, just for that quantity of one. And that's just a single one, which is the mobile stand, which is an adjustable mobile stand, so it's both mobile and height adjustable.
So why only one of those?
What's that?
Why only one of the, the one separate stand?
So we have mobile stands, the board actually, in the last several times, we've approved some purchases for those. So for example, we use those in commons area or media center area, if there's professional development, to hook two of those together, so it gives the building some flexibility to be able to wheel it into a space, whether that be the commons, the media center, things of that nature. So we've actually had those stands in use at a lot of our other secondary schools, it's just this is the first one that's the height adjustable, since it's elementary.
And were we able to salvage anything from the old Lowell?
The projectors that they're using right now are actually from the old Lowell. So what we actually did was take the projectors off, and then they're using the projectors in their temporary locations at the AEA room, their AEA rooms. We also did salvage other things like remotes, obviously, but then pens, the interactive pens. We took the electronics out of the board, so technically the boards themselves, which is really just a composite material that we didn't salvage, we didn't have, there's no use for those, but we robbed them of any workable parts before the, before we had to be out of the building.
So the quantity of 54 is just for Lowell?
It is, including the pre-K rooms. So we're ordering for both K through five, as well as the pre-K rooms, but yes, it's just for Lowell, both the portion that will open this winter, as well as the pre-K that will open later.
So that's similar to the other elementary? They have all 50 in their schools too?
Well, Lowell has more classrooms. They also have a few more common spaces as well, so the other elementaries are generally in the, again, depending on the size of the building, more in the lower 40s, but then, you know, we have the additional pre-K classrooms, which adds on to that total.
Okay, thank you.
And I would think it makes sense, you know, we have a policy of putting new equipment in general into our new buildings, you know, like new stools, that if we're going to have these new active boards, they go into our newest building.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, the poor teachers at Lowell have been troopers in doing without that, so I feel like they've definitely earned some new tech, for sure.
And now, do we have these guaranteed delivered to be in the classrooms before school? I just know with all the other issues.
Yeah. I will be honest that that's, I wanted to get this on your agenda tonight before, typically we do one big package, including, you know, the devices and whatnot, and I wanted to get this on the agenda so we could get the order in. It's going to be tight. What I'm hearing is the, supply chains have been really crazy lately. So just as an example, a year ago, it would be probably, it took four to six months to get Chromebooks in, and now those are shipping relatively quickly, within a few weeks. Promethean Boards, Active Panels, were on a two-to-four-week lead time, and then all of a sudden, they've gone to a two-to-four-month lead time. So that's actually why we're doing the higher-end unit, we've worked with Promethean, the vendor, but even this higher-end unit that we're ordering is going to be tight. So I want to get the order in, you know, they don't guarantee your place in line until you actually get the order in. So we'll certainly push to get them installed, but I'm hearing it's going to be tight.
What budget is this coming from?
I believe we're doing saved dollars for this. Is that right, Mr. Coughlin? Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so I can visualize what this looks like. So the board goes on top of the mobile stand, it's not attached to the wall?
So we're only buying one mobile stand, so that's the case. In all of the classrooms, it's an adjustable height stand, so it's basically kind of behind the Active Panel. There's a fancy stand that allows teachers to be able to grab the corners to raise them up and down.
So this is flipped, because it has that you, we're buying 53 mobile stands and one adjustable, so.
I think those numbers just got, the quantities just got inverted.
Yep, my apologies.
Okay, you know, I just didn't even, I couldn't visualize that. Thank you, Matt.
The total amounts are right, because I double-checked those off the quote, and I apologize, I flipped the other pieces.
They still get to 54, both.
Still get to the same quantity and the same total cost, so the motion is correct.
Okay. Yeah, and the price is correct.
Correct.
Yeah, good. All right.
Thank you for getting this in, though, so we might have a chance.
Yep.
Fingers crossed.
Let's get it, get her done. So, okay, so we'll pass this, so you can go home and send an email.
Exactly.
All right, all those in favor then of approving the technology purchase for Lowell, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for tonight, and so I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent report.
Great, thank you. I guess I'd just like to start with a thank you for renewing my contract, extending my contract. I'm grateful for the compensation and for your support, and the comments are, they mean a lot to me. It has been a very incredible, incredibly difficult, really, couple of years, to be honest, 18 months for sure, so I appreciate that greatly. It's, I have said many times, it is a privilege to lead, but privilege does not, is not synonymous with easy, so, yeah, so thank you, thank you for that. And the only other thing I wanted to comment on, this is just kind of a good time, I know Andrew is going to call me, so I'm actually just going to do this right now, so he doesn't have to, because I know he wants some quotes from me, so sharpen up your pencil here, ready, here we go. So my comments are just really in reference to some, I don't know what, legal decisions, I guess, that happened today, this afternoon. So a little bit earlier, in the consent agenda, we talked about the fact that we are securing some legal assistance and a legal team for the lawsuit with the masks. So what happened in that same lawsuit is, not only, there were two things. There was a, not only was there the complaint about the governors or the state of Iowa, the legislature, legislators' decision to prohibit districts from having masks, the other thing that happened is, the group of plaintiffs also said that they filed for something called a immediate, no, what's the name of the thing that they called for? The injunction, what's the, temporary injunction, temporary injunction. So the temporary injunction was basically a statement from the plaintiffs, which in this case were the families and the ARC. They had said, they were hoping that the judge would say, we don't want to wait until this goes through the court system, we don't want to wait for that, we believe that, because right now, while we're waiting for the judgment or for the, you know, this to go through the court system, right now, we would stay as-is, and the stay as-is is prohibited masks. So they said, we would prefer to, you know, go to local decisions and have districts have the chance to implement, and we would like that to be kind of the temporary decision while we're waiting for this court case to play out. So the temporary injunction went, was heard before a judge, I can't think of his name, not Hackett, I can't think of it, anyway, it doesn't matter the name, the judgment. So the case was heard at 10 o'clock on Friday, and there was a question of whether the judge might even rule from the bench, meaning he would just hear the case and make his decision right then and there. Well, that didn't happen, and the judge said that he would have a statement or response and a decision over the next few days. Well, we weren't sure what that was, and so that decision did come back just a couple of hours ago. I'm actually not sure of the right, I know when I got the, we got the email, I'm not exactly sure what time the judge made the decision, but the decision was that he did grant the temporary injunction, meaning I'm, he's saying, I agree, we need to change this rule right now while we're waiting for the court case to happen. Now, the court case could confirm what the judge said, it could go against what the judge said, we don't know how the actual court case will play out, but we know that while we're waiting for the judge, for the court case to happen, the decision right now is that they granted the local control back to the district. So the juris, the temporary injunction did pass, meaning the state can no longer prohibit districts from having masks. So it's kind of like a double negative, if that makes sense. So the, that passed, and so now the state of Iowa can no longer prohibit districts from having masks. So that's a little bit of the, maybe in layman's terms, I don't actually know if I did it in layman's terms, but that's kind of what it says. So here's my comments about that. I actually, I believe, Awkwafu told me that by the time this came out, we had immediately, we had five media stations call and say, what does Jane think about this? What does Jane think? And I said, I don't really know what Jane thinks, because this is just, you know, first of all, it's just a, this decision is just a couple hours old, so we need some time. All districts, and I would argue, organizations and all businesses rely on legal guidance when things like this happen. We are in the kid business, we are in the education business, we are not in the law business. And so we need some time to find out what this means. I will be honest with you that I, just in the short amount of time from the time I found out to the time the board meeting, I was, I was, actually, we had a meeting quickly with our attorney, with the Aylers and Cooney, we had the nine districts online, and they were just hearing it, some of them were just hearing this for the first time as they came online. So, and there are many superintendents in the state of Iowa who have not yet really even heard of this. I just, since we've been sitting in this board meeting, I've gotten three texts from three superintendents who said, what's going on? What's going on? I heard that there's some ruling that we need to pay attention. So people don't know, I heard from a couple public health departments, and they were not aware of it either. So this is quite new. So when, and I understand when people say, hey, what's our decision? Where are we going right now? And of course, the media's job is to report, and that's super fair, that's their job. Our statement is, we need some time. We have to have, we rely on legal guidance, we haven't gotten that yet. I haven't even read the judge's statement. I haven't even heard the findings, I haven't even read those yet. So we just need some time there. Another comment, I guess I would say, the topic of masks is polarizing, and I know that. And we are already getting emails, I've had several emails come in, I think when you get back to your computers and you read, I think you've gotten one already, it looks like it was CC to the board, people are already starting to weigh in, do not mandate masks, and you should mandate masks, and they're already starting to come. So we understand parents, I understand that there, for as many parents as we have, we have about 7,000 different families in Waterloo, and there's a lot of differing opinions. So I understand that, so if you'll just give us a moment to process that, I hear you. I know there's a lot of differing opinions, so I get that. Another comment I would say is, as you know, I have not, since this thing, this beginning of COVID, I have not one time made a unilateral decision from my desk and my desk only. I don't do that, especially when it's, we're navigating through something that I am unfamiliar with, as we all are, right? We don't know. And so for me to believe that I can just snap my fingers and come up with the right decision without hearing people, without listening, without getting advisement, whether it's legal guidance or health advisement, I can't do that, and I won't do that. So I have not made a unilateral decision since we started. We have rather used input from health officials, we've listened to parents, we've talked with students, we've talked with staff, we've done our due diligence, and we will do that right now. We have a history of using our return-to-learn committees to, you know, share with them information, listening to them, to ensure we're making good decisions. I believe that our team is going to assemble, even after our board meeting is over, to process and to read the decision, and to learn a little bit more about that. I know what often seems as a no-brainer to one is not a no-brainer to another. So we will, I promise our public, most of all, I promise our students and our families that we will work into the night to determine what this means. I do believe it's going to take us a little while to get some legal guidance. I know that I already have a meeting scheduled at 8:00 in the morning, so I will visit with a couple of other people that, you know, can provide some input for us. So, you know, just in closing, I will tell you that, you know, we take this very seriously, we always have and we always will. We will put a lot of good thought, we will listen to a lot of people, we will listen to a lot of experts, we are going to, you know, get some input on this, and our public will hear more shortly. So thank you for listening to those comments.
Thanks, Jane. I'm not really sure which side, I got to look at my cheat sheet for September 13th. Okay. So I think I'm starting down here with Lyle on this end, is that right? Yeah, I am, because I started on that. Yep, okay, look, yes. So Lyle, board comments, sorry.
No additional comments at this point.
Okay, thank you. Aster?
I have any.
All right. Sue?
I don't have any either.
Jessie?
I just echo to our community, patience as we go from this, patience to our leadership. They know, that you want to provide feedback, we'll give them some time, get some, your feet underneath them, it's been really fast-moving information tonight.
Thank you. India?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. With that said about trying to process this, do we have any protocol with COVID? And there was a question that came to the table due to the fact that we are going into flu season, we're going through allergies. How are we determining how a student's getting sent home? Is it COVID? Is it allergies? So I know we had mentioned that at once, and you guys were in discussion, but where are we? Because parents are concerned, they're, you know, the wait time of, yeah, and it's like, is my allergy, but you know, how are we determining that? So that's my one.
Yeah, I think, and I would ask Kingsley and Stephanie to chime in on this too, there, you know, there is protocol in place for how we're proceeding with that, and we are following that protocol. There's, they have minor symptoms and major symptoms, and so it's always been two or more minors or one major symptom off of the list, and so we do look at that, we have, you know, conversations. It has been very. It has been very tricky because we're going, you're, you're exactly right, we are going into, the, the post-allergy, you know, I, ragweed is, you know, August, and we're going into that. And right now, um, there, there's lots of families that are, that are saying, you know, I, I, I'm pretty sure it's allergies, geez, I, I don't know. Um, we just received, uh, I, I just, I believe it came on Friday, I got an email from a local pediatrician who said they're just being inundated by families that are coming in with, for COVID testing. And they're coming back, you know, that, that there's a lot of allergy things going on. And so, um, that, that pediatrician had reached out to us and had asked if they could just have a meeting with us to just continue. And, and of course, we're gonna take that meeting, you know, we, we do wanna talk with people, we, we're talking with health officials, we're talking with public health. And so, um, we're, we're, we're following the protocol that we had, it's not really unlike what we had last year. Um, you know, we're notifying parents if their children have been exposed, and, um, so we're, we're working through that. Um, we do have, you know, the, students do not have to stay home, that has changed the exposure. If you are exposed, you do not have to stay home. That being said, we have parents who are opting to keep their parent, their children home, that's of course excused absence. And we're providing work, and we're, we're supporting them through that, if that's, if that's the choice. So we're really trying to work with our families on that.
Um, question was, is there an option that we can get rapid testing in our schools, uh, as an option?
I'm actually gonna defer to Kingsley to see if he can help me out with that.
We're working on it, you know, I think, honestly, it's, it's a conversation about time. I still need to connect with Dr. Lindeman about, um, a number of home tests that we're requesting to see, to give to our families and our staff to address some of these things, but rapid testing is an option, we just, we need more information. Um, part of the conversation tomorrow that we're having, um, is gonna help that as well, and so we're just working through that. But, sooner rather than later, i- i- it's just, you know, yeah, I was telling, um, well anyways, yeah. Sooner rather than later, time is just never on our side type of thing. But that's, that's a piece that we, we currently, there are rapid testing options, and again, the question is, what is rapid? There are rapid testing, testing options at Walgreens and things along those lines that you can go get. Um, typically, that's about twenty-four hours, which is about, you know, as rapid as you can get. We wanna be careful with just, uh, making sure that we are not giving information for just any old test. Uh, because, right now, there's a number of tests at, you know, um, multiple retail, um, um, places that, again, may not necessarily give the level of validity that we need in order to have individuals, um, back into the building. And so we're, we're navigating through some, um, some interesting, uh, waters.
Well, and I suppose there's questions on the rela- reliability of those tests too, on the rapid test.
That's correct, uh, even last year, when we were talking about rapid testing, cause this is a request I had, you know, when COVID started, it was a question of rapid tests only provide a certain percentage of reliability. And at that time, it was still requesting that a PCR test be done, um, even afterwards. So, I don't know where we're, again, we still have to get more information about, you know, whether or not that's still required. And, you know, typically, the reliability of somebody being positive, if they received, um, one of those rapid tests was, you know, pretty good probability, or a, a really good probability, I think it was around ninety-five percent. The, the issue was about getting those false negatives and needing the, uh, PCR test to reconfirm.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Um, my next question was about busing, I kind of gave you a, um, that I, any updates? I know that we've received a lot of, I know I've received phone calls and parents questioning about busing. Um, I know we're about three weeks, four weeks, um, into class, uh, but it's still hard. Um, kids are not getting dropped off, they're getting dropped off late, uh, the communication with the busing has been an issue. Um, so can you just kinda give us update where we are and what can be offered for those parents who are? Right now, they're having the blues, and so what are their options?
Some of it is time, you know, I think that, you know, not to share all the information, but we, you know, if you look at the percentages, and I have the report in front of me right now, we were in the, um, upper eighties, and then we dropped to the, um, dropped to the low eighties, and then we're up at the nineties as of last week. As far as, that's the on-time report that we can pull at any time. And so I'm sure that many of our parents are feeling that lull of the low eighties, um, when it compared to dropping kids off on time. Um, we're gonna meet with Durham sometime this week to really get a better handle, we just didn't have time to meet next week, um, a really better handle on this. I think the communication piece is one that, um, again, you know, I need to, there's a couple of things. One, we need to really define a, a clear process by which, um, they receive calls and complaints. I think we've heard some of the same, maybe concerns that you have, as far as I've been calling, I'm calling, I'm calling, and I don't get anybody to pick up. Typically, they didn't then call the district, but right now, again, I don't have a way of, um, um, measuring or codifying that information to give you kind of just broad numbers. I would tell you that Durham would say they're doing the best that they can, um, at this point. Um, but again, for us, as you know, in, in our departments and school district, we typically have some type of system set up. And so, we will be working with Durham on that. I know we talked maybe a couple of months ago about that complaint system that they had. Um, but that is still a, a convoluted process as far as complaints. I do have some ideas as far as what we can do, um, in the interim immediately to address some of the concerns around that. Uh, I just need time to get that in place. And I, I'll send a board update, um, in the weekly update as well, as regards to what that process is. And you'll probably already, you'll probably also see it in email, um, as well, going out to all staff and parents.
I would just say, um, and it being reiterated is that we've been here, we've had this conversation. Um, and it's very frustrating because we don't have very many options. But, you know, we talked about matrix, what are their matrix, what are their expectations as far as with the community and with our kids, you know? It hurts to know that we have elementary kids, and they're getting dropped off at places that they shouldn't be. And it's like, the responsibility level, you know, accountability, and who do we put that on? And so, I, I'm looking forward to know what the conversation will be like.
And I would urge all parents and families, you know, and we'll set something up here shortly, but i- if they can call the district. I think some of it, you know, that we found out, we didn't know anything about, you know, parents may, may get upset. Parents may get upset and, um, and maybe email you, but then, you know, it'll, it'll be news to me or news to Marty. Um, again, simply because they may have reached out to Durham and gotten no response, and didn't think to reach out to us. And so, we wanna be clear that the expectation is, if you're not getting your answer in one place, please come to us with those concerns, so we can, um, do something about it. I know that when principals have reached out, we've been able to address those concerns immediately, if not that day. So I know that Durham is, um, and this isn't any, um, this isn't any, um, you know, um, admiration of Durham right now, it's just, they, they have done a really good job. If we know it, and I can call them and talk to them, they're really, they're, they're ready to change it. But we wanna make sure that system is set up, so it's clear, and, um, and families know how to navigate that appropriately.
Thank you, I appreciate you addressing that. And my last point was, um, I know we didn't get the weekly update, um, but could you just follow up about the SRO? Um, I'm hoping at some point, Marla can just kinda address where we are. Um, I know that we did talk about when we did have the board meeting, that she was just gonna come back and kinda give us an update, but that's also a concern with mine too.
And I'm sorry, just pick. Could you tell us what the actual COVID, cause I did have someone call me today and said that, they said their fifth grader had to stay out ten days, cause it had two symptoms. So what is the actual COVID protocol for all of our buildings?
The protocol is, is if there are symptoms, there, um, if they, if they get tested, they can, they can do one of three things to get back in school. They can either wait the ten days from the day that the symptoms started. They can go to the doctor and get a test, if it is negative, they can return to school. Or they can seek, um, med- or medical, um, guidance, medical attention and, um, have a doctor's appointment. And if the symptoms are found to be related to something else, then they can, they can, the doctor will write a note and says, you know, I looked at this, this patient, and it's very clear this, the symptoms are due to allergies, he or she may come. So there are three ways that they can return.
And we just went through this, because last week, Todd and I were second, it came from Mallory the week before. Um, thankfully, Walgreens, you can do like, if you're two and over, you can go online, make the appointment, you go through the drive-through. You don't have to, to see a doctor, and then they can at least, um, let you know if, if it's COVID or not. You know, then like Jane said, if it is something else, they need to look into, but then you can go right back to school as long as, yeah, the test comes back.
And I think CVS just started offering free, CVS just started offering free tests, uh, at the one up on Logan.
So those, those tests that you're referring to at Walgreens, so those are permissible to the school? Without, without a physician? Do you need a phys- uh, do you need to get a test from a physician?
You get an actual lab report.
It just has to be a, it just has to be a COVID test, uh, okay.
And they're free.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to add that.
Yes, that it's free.
CVS has got them free too, so.
And the results, results I think are between two and twenty-four hours.
Yes, and mine came right to my email, I knew at eleven o'clock at night, so, it's great.
They often come within four or five hours.
Yeah, they, they are very backed up right now though, they'll, so, um.
All right.
I just had one thing, um, not to beat a poor dead horse. Um, but I received another communication from my child's school, the only communications that I've received so far have been regarding dress code. And, um, this one said that starting today, that students will be sent to in-school suspension, and that the, the major issues that they're seeing are sweatpants, jeans, athletic shorts, T-shirts that are not district-related, and then shorts and skirts that are not required knee-length standards. And I guess, with everything going on, um, and all the, the, you know, trying to fi- find our way through even with like the masks, like parents' choice. Um, we are not trusting parents to dress their own children, but we're trusting them to decide if they can wear a mask, which if I don't wear one, I could endanger the child next to me. So, um, I'm just having a lot of trouble getting these communications and not getting anything saying, hey, can, you know, our recommendation is that your child wear a mask, if, you know, we're not getting anything like that. And it had been my understanding before the school year started, that we were going to highly encourage those things, but we haven't. So, it just feels hypocritical to me, that we are focusing, hyper-focusing on, um, athletic shorts versus masks, so, um, that's it, thanks.
I did have a chat with Marla before the board meeting about some of that correspondence, that I know that she is planning to send something out to administrators and families to address some of those issues that you just brought up, so just.
Thank you.
FYI, yeah.
And it wa- and this wasn't just for me, I'm sorry.
Right, no, I know, I know, that's why I'm saying, I, I did kinda take that up the pipeline, so. All right, um, well with that, is there any further, uh, what am I trying to say? Business, by gosh, to come before the board. Yeah, I know, everybody's gone, then seeing that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jessie, in a second?
Second.
All right, Stacy, whew, all right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you and good night, and stay safe.